Alright, so this webinar is being recorded, so anyone your image and voice may be recorded, it will be recorded if you want to speak up, so know that. You can feel free to leave if you don't want to be recorded, but this meeting is recorded. We'll call the meeting of the Berlin Boylston Regional School District to order at five oh five. Uh first item up any public comments, I'm looking at the attendee list, if you're an attendee and you would like to comment. Please use the raise your hand feature and if I see one, I'll call on you. See three attendees that aren't panelists. Nobody's raising their hand for a comment, uh if you do have a comment later on, feel free to email us or try to get my attention. Uh anyway, moving on to the consent agenda, I could have a motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
So moved.
Lori, I hear Lori, is there a second?
Second.
That sounded like Julie, alright, all in favor? Anyone against? Alright, so the consent agenda as is passes. Now we'll start with the reports, uh we'll start just real quickly with my report, uh thank you everyone for coming on today. Uh five o'clock for our first meeting of the school year, since it is summer before school has actually started. We're gonna do our best to hear from you, get an update, and then we're gonna get into some details, I think, in some subcommittees with some topics that we'll hear tonight. And come back in September when school does start a little bit more. Uh robust meet and greet of everyone and down to details, but first I want to mention this year. We will be preparing for an election next year, November twenty twenty four, there will be a school committee election. Uh three seats will be up for election, uh two Berlin seats, uh the seats currently with Lisa and Julie. And one Boylston seat, uh the seat that Megan is in right now, that will be up for election next year, twenty twenty four. Paperwork for that will start happening this spring, I believe April is the first deadline we need to make, so we'll be working on that. Uh and then in relation to that, the first big task that that new committee from November twenty twenty four will take on. Will be the, uh this being the second year of the most recently negotiated teacher's contract. Uh that contract will be up at the end of next year. And that first committee will start look, working on that, that's one of the biggest things that that committee will be working on first up, so. Uh that will be that. Um that is my report, uh next up, we do have a special guest in here, the Berlin Fire Chief. To discuss what happened at BMS with the sprinkler system and what their plan is for this year, at least to start us off, so. Uh Mike McQuillan, if you would uh take over there, thank you.
Hi there, thanks for having me, is everybody able to hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Perfect, so um just to bring everybody up to speed, about two weeks ago, we did have a fire at the school that involved the. Fire pump that supplies the sprinkler system to the building. Um that fire resulted from kind of a motor failure inside the unit that uh burned the unit up. And also backfed the electrical system into the school, uh into the electrical room for the main supply into the building. Um fortunately, it didn't spread beyond that, so it's just the electrical system that affects the sprinkler system um going into the building and those components. Um as a result of that, there is no working sprinkler system for uh Berlin Memorial School. Um so what we've kind of done is uh moving forward, we're going to be doing um fire watch details at the school during the day when the schools are open. Um and that will consist of one of the firefighters being assigned at the school. Um and their job is going to be to act as that sprinkler system, that if a fire was to break out, they will go to actually try to contain that fire and control it. Um the reason being is that obviously with the uh the young students that are in the school um and having the ratio of so many kids to one adult. Um the sprinkler systems design is to uh basically uh allow for an evacuation of the building, it actually does not completely extinguish a fire in most cases. Um so our intent is to kind of control that to allow the children to get out, because obviously they become. You know, in an emergency, as you've all seen, they they kind of freeze and kind of, you know, uh kind of get stuck in their tracks. Um so we're kind of moving forward, trying to work with the school and the s- and the public to uh minimize the effects. When we have the younger uh population that's in the school, obviously when it's older, adults that are in there. That are using the gymnasium or something like that, we're not gonna be as concerned, because uh obviously they can self evacuate, and when the numbers aren't that big. It's not that uh large of an incident for us. Um so I'm speaking with the Fire Marshal's Office and kind of working with them, they thought that that was a pretty good idea for us moving forward. Is just to protect the students and the staff that are in the schools to have somebody present uh during the. Um uh beginning part of the school year here, as we try to figure out uh how long it's gonna take to actually repair the system. Um from what I gather, it's going to be a longer um timeframe uh than one would usually expect. They kind of figure out what the damage is and how long it's gonna take to get the, yeah, basically a new fire pump in and to replace the system there.
So that timeline's still unknown?
As far as I know, um I would have to probably ask Dan if he has any more on that as the facilities uh person or. Um I don't know if Nancy has anything more from that, from uh Mia coming in and kind of looking at and working with the contractors.
Uh Dan, Dan, are you on?
Yeah, I'm on.
Can you hear me? Uh yeah, I'm gonna let you speak to that.
So I met with the uh Fire Equipment Incorporated and a pump specialist last Friday. Uh they came in, it says damage and they uh recommended a replacement of the pump itself. Uh to do the work and getting everything, all the parts, it's gonna take probably one to two months. And we're looking at at least two weeks for a proper estimate for the damages.
So realistically, probably at least three months?
Could be, yeah.
So is one fire, is is one fire personnel on site adequate for that size of a building?
Yeah, I think for that size of the building, for having one person there is gonna be adequate. For there, they're pretty much gonna be in that building, and my plan is to get together with um. Um with with John to kind of go over uh the interactions during the day and stuff, to have them in the building, interacting with people and talking with people. That their primary responsibility is gonna be when the alarm goes off, to go to wherever the problem's going to be to investigate it. Um they'll have a fire extinguisher that's gonna be in it, obviously we have them in the building, but they'll have one with them that day with a radio as well. Um and their intent, if there isn't an actual fire, is going to be to kind of shut the doors, make sure it's contained. And see if they can actually um knock that fire down and keep it contained to where it is with the extinguisher they have until the duty crew can arrive and assist them.
And that person's on site all day, if if there's another call in town, they, do they leave to go to that call, or they that they stay there?
Nope, they're committed to the school from right now, I have them set up every day. Um zero seven thirty to uh uh four thirty in the afternoon, it's a nine hour day for them to uh. Basically try to incorporate everybody that's gonna be there for the kids and stuff, figuring that by four thirty, five o'clock, most of the population is gonna be out of the school. Um and kind of looking and working with the rec department and stuff to coordinate any other events that are going on at the school that the town may have. Or that the school is being used for, um to be able to work around that as well.
So Carolyn, John, you you have um before school and after school programs, is that gonna be impacted?
I think those will be covered during those, that time period.
The after school goes beyond four thirty though.
Yeah, and I, in talking with the chief, I think the feeling was that the number would be so small at that point. That we'd be in a good position not to have to worry about evacuation processes.
Anybody have any questions?
Is there any way to expedite um getting this fixed, or are we just kind of like stuck? It just seems like a really long, I understand the process and I think it's good. Um it still makes me nervous because they're children, um I don't know, is there any way to expedite it?
Uh to be honest, no. Plus, we don't, we won't know if they have the materials on hand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think part of the problem is still that supply chain issue that we have uh that's affecting some of the parts and pieces that go with this. Especially with the entire fire pump being replaced. Um one of the things that I do want to point out is that it does have a complete uh full operational uh fire alarm system for the building. Meaning smokes, heats, and pulse stations. Um and one of the things that we do have is, I mean, we're fortunate enough that we do have the sprinkler system for the building. But there are hundreds of schools, of elementary schools across the Commonwealth that actually don't have a sprinkler system in them. Because the buildings are so old, their grandfather, where they don't need one, they're required to have the the actual fire alarm system. But not required to have a sprinkler system. Um so that's one of the things, again, when I spoke with the Fire Marshal's Office, that was one of the things that we had discussed was they. That they wanted to make sure that there was actually a fully functional alarm system in the building, which I assured them there was, that everything is up to code. From the uh actual alarm standpoint and stuff, which, you know, there's a lot to be said for that too. Because a little bit of smoke from a fire is going to set off the alarms and do that quick notification, which the firefighter that's gonna be on scene. Is gonna be able to quickly respond and hopefully get in and control whatever's going on at that point, if it actually is a fire. Um so while it is a little concerning not to have this regular system, I think we're still in a very good position with the alarm system that we do have down there. Uh the maintenance has been very good with it and it is modern, um and there aren't problems with the alarm system.
Carol, is there any thought given to parents or staff who, or any options for parents or staff? Who might not be comfortable with with having their kid there because of this, any, anything being considered there?
We haven't considered, I've been following the guidance of of Chief McQuillan, I was just thinking about that four thirty to six o'clock time and wondering. Chief, you had offered a chance to do some training with with volunteer staff members who may want to stay on for that hour and a half of time. So I don't know if that's something we could consider uh doing for that period. The rest of the time, as long as I think having um someone from the fire department in the building is adequate. And I think, and I have talked to a number of folks from other districts who who also say that, a- as he just expressed. The the um sprinkler system is not present in a number of buildings. I'm not saying that I like that at all, I'm not saying that I'm okay with that, I think that we have it, it should be fixed, it needs to be up and running. But right now I'm comfortable um with the arrangement that it is for the, for temporarily. I would mind to dismantle this and then say, never mind, we we're not gonna have this put in, you know what I mean? We're we're looking at costs, we're looking at insurance, um it's just the time that it's taking, fortunately.
And I do want to throw out that 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 time of doing those nine hours from seven uh thirty to four thirty, that those those are flexible. We can extend those hours if we need to. Um I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there's a early release day, I believe, one day. Um and I know it's a workshop for the staff, and I don't know if the building's gonna be occupied, or if we want to have a. Um fire watch for that entire day, or if we don't need one, if the staff isn't gonna be in the building. But those are the things that we can work on as we move forward, getting into that minutia and changing the times based on what's needed for the schools. And the students and the staff, if we need to extend that later in the day to six thirty, because of things going on, or it makes people more comfortable, we can certainly look at doing that too.
Yeah, I agree.
Finally, Carol, a- as far as cost for the overtime and and all this, from the budget perspective, is this coming from the current year's school budget? Is the the town pick up the tab, how does that work?
Yeah, Nancy and I have been talking about that, I know that she was looking into the insurance on this, Nancy, what did you find out from the that aspect of it?
Um I don't have any answers at this time, they're looking, you know, they don't have a final determination whether the fire watch person will be covered or not.
Yeah.
They're they're still doing an investigation of the whole thing.
That's the insurance company, right?
Yeah, that's the insurance company, yeah. I'm hopeful, but no, no, nothing final.
So un- until we we have that answer, then I assume it comes from the school's current year budget to, from somewhere to cover that?
We haven't really talked to the chief about that yet either, yeah, it would have to at this point in time, come from the general budget, we'll create a separate fund. Um for, you know, insurance recoupment. Um and take it from that and hoping, in hopes that it will be replenished when we get reimbursed. Um and if that doesn't happen, we'll have to revisit the situation.
Alright.
Why, why wouldn't the town cover that if it was, it sounds like, I get the, hopefully the insurance will pay for it, but I'm just wondering if the town. The buildings, I thought the building responsibility belonged to the town. Wouldn't this be kind of under that blanket, or I I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there?
Yeah, I can speak towards it is that that would be a decision that would be uh in at basically the town administrator's uh o- office at her level. Uh for um Kristen Rubin to make um as to, you know, as far as whether or not it comes out of the town budget or not. I'm not sure where that falls with the ownership of the building and the use of the building and. And all that, so I can't really speak to that, but I can certainly try to follow up with her about that and stuff and kind of uh link people up for that.
Yeah, and I think Mike, we should sit down and talk about the number of hours we estimate for this before we can go with Kristen together and sit. To your point, Kristen, it's gonna come, it's gonna come from the town one way or the other, you know, really, and we think of it.
Right.
Yeah, no, things come up during the year that, you know, we need to take from the budget and years not even started yet, and here we have a big one, so.
Right.
Maybe something uh subcommittee, budget subcommittee, Julia and Megan, to keep an eye on, but uh if, does anybody have any other questions? Alright, I don't see any other questions, uh thank you, thank you, Mike, for coming on and speaking to us here, I think everybody might feel a little more comfortable now.
Not a problem, and I'll encourage, if anybody has any questions or concerns, especially parents or any groups that want to talk to me, or you want me to speak to them. I am more than happy to kind of, I I'd love to have the conversation, just to put people at ease. Um then we're taking it seriously and, you know, we're looking at it and doing everything we can just to keep everybody in the building, especially the kids and the staff as safe as can be. So by all means, send people my way if you need to, if somebody's concerned, or if they have issues, I'm more than happy to answer any questions or talk to anybody.
And Mike, I would add, I mean, um chief, I would add on to that too, I that I I want to emphasize, I respect and I trust your judgment on this. And and the procedure that we're following going forward, I also share that, that I would not put the children in jeopardy in that building. So I think, I think that we have a good plan in place for sa- safety wise.
Yes, agreed, thank you.
Alright, thank you, chief. Uh okay, moving on, Carol, that brings us to your, your report.
Yeah, I've wanted to start quickly by introducing our new administrative team um that we have been meeting with already. We've had, I think, over seven meetings already this summer, I'm excited to have them on board. We have Cynthia Sykes, she is the Boylston Principal. And uh Richard Cameron is over with Lisa Sequera as the Assistant Principal, along with Renee Legendra, who we uh hired in. End of July, and she already joined us for our retreat and several other admin meetings, and she is also over with Lisa Sequera. So we welcome them and they have been working terrific, terrifically as a team, um so we're grateful to have them on board with us. I don't know if anybody else wanted to share anything, Lisa or John, want to say anything? Maybe he can't.
Well, I'll just say that I, we are very grateful to be working together, um we've really gelled as a team. There's a lot of energy and a lot of excitement around the beginning of the year, so it's looking to be great.
Yeah, we're excited, we're very excited, thank you, thanks Lisa. Alrighty, we're gonna move on, um the summary, the summer retreat follow up. Basically, I did the action steps that the school committee had asked about. Our attorney, Kim Rosak, is interested and very willing to do pro bono work, a workshop or workshops for us. She just wanted us to nail down what we wanted on the agenda, so um that's something, if I think maybe perhaps if the school committee members. Send to Mike, um things that you want to make sure she covers, we can put that agenda together and send it off to Kim. So then we can set up a schedule for her to meet with us, a- any questions around that? And we're just gonna skip down, I'm in my report to the attendance at the November M A S S, M A S C conference in Hyannis. Jessica and I are both registered for the event, I wanted to ask a- again if anybody else was interested in going, we have the information up at the office. If you're, or if you're planning to attend, that we didn't know if you registered.
I definitely would love to attend.
Great, okay, Lisa, I'm gonna add you and we'll send that information, we pay for your conference time.
Great, so. Thank you.
Great, I'll make sure you go. And one. The next piece is the superintendent's goals, when Mike and I talked about this and planning for the agenda. Um basically, what we wanted to do is just give you kind of a a snapshot of what I was thinking about. For for my goals for this year, um it had said in my contract to have the draft ready for August, but. We've, we wanted to discuss it with the with the committee at large, and then I can do a draft of it and have it ready for the September meeting. But I do have that in there, I don't know if anybody had any comments or any other suggestions, something you would prefer for me to work on for my goals.
And I think Carol, if if nobody has anything here, but maybe if something comes up in the next couple of days or whatever. We do have a subcommittee specifically dedicated to superintendent goals, right, that we've used in the past to work through this, or maybe we can get together. Like Lori, you've been part of that, yeah, so we can hash out some details there and then bring that back to the full committee in September. I don't think that would be a problem, if anybody has anything they want to bring up now, or if you think of something in the next few days.
I was trying to think back on what we had talked about this summer and in the past and try to capture that. And obviously, as we've, you know, have superintendents before me have shared, this isn't all we do. Um this is, this is just that kind of focus area for evaluation, but if you feel that there's something that's more urgent. Or that's more pressing, um I'm happy to do that, so.
Just that's a trouble with goals, right, you you set them today and then tomorrow, you got a whole new set of problems to deal with.
Yeah, yeah. I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that, yeah, that's true.
Uh yeah, uh if anybody has any questions, feel free to bring it up, or we can um revisit in September.
Okay, that'd be great. The last piece for me is the background checks, Mike and I have been going back and forth, I talked to Lori, just because I'm I'm very new to policy. We're certain, like, exceptions or additions to policies. Um we had some questions that came up related to volunteers in the schools, particularly the elementary schools. And the issue was around fingerprinting for everyone, basically that there's a cost um incurred with the fingerprinting going for. Going to get the fingerprints done, um so there's a hardship for some folks to have this done. When actually it isn't necessarily necessary to do. We certainly expect the queries, all cor- all volunteers have got to have queries and sorrys done now. The fingerprinting, it, there's, there's language in our policy. But I, we, I just was trying to look for a way to clarify, what does that specifically mean? And do we, do we open up the policy again, or can we just go along with the, with the description that I include included for you? The fingerprinting for volunteers and chaperones to make it clear for parents and volunteers. What, what and when they would need to have fingerprinting done? So um Lori and I were back and forth on this and uh Mike, I think Mike came down to. Do, if i- is the chair, you wanted to um open this up again to the policy subcommittee? Before we decide, or you just wanted to, um you were comfortable with this going out, it's just additional information around the policy itself. Some, some districts, some districts do that, some districts embedded in their policy, I've been looking at them in different ways from different districts.
So, here it is, right now, we have the policy as it is, we took a look at it in the spring. Um it's fine, I think it works fine for right now, the language in there, the word may. The superintendent has discretion as to whether or not in certain cases, fingerprints will be needed, I think it comes down to. Are these people going to be alone with children, or is there gonna be someone else there with them, so like an overnight trip, it's possible they might be alone.
Right.
Uh that might need a better look, we can certainly take a look at it at the next policy meeting, which I believe will be before the next full school committee meeting. Um so we can certainly take a look at it then, but I think for right now, just that sort of clarification, I think is fine to send out to parents if they need it.
Okay, yeah, that, I think that that, we appreciate that, I know that. Um the org, the parent teacher organizations, particularly Link, um who was involved in this discussion initially with me. Are are trying to certainly recruit their volunteers, they rely heavily on them, they do a lot of the pro, after school programs. Again, all of those individuals are quarried and sorried, I've had conversations with Kyle Burns, who may even be on tonight. Um and talking about getting those people who are running different after school programs, that they would have to be fingerprinted, anybody. Uh or or I'm sorry, board members from Link, who would be there, present for any of these after school programs or other activities that they have. So that's that piece, it speaks to volunteers who weren't fingerprinted, having the supervision of somebody who is fingerprinted. And again, not being left alone with the children.
Yeah, I don't think we want to clog up the system with fingerprints for someone who wants to come and read for an afternoon or something like that.
Right, so, okay.
Flight, whatever.
We'll get this out then to um to the family, so that that, there's clarity around that, um it's just the language, I think, of the policies. Is broad, want to just bring it down a little bit more, make it clearer for everybody, so we, we know what we need to do, that's it for me.
Alright, anybody have any questions for Carol on anything whatsoever? How was your lunch today, Carol, was it good? Any questions, anything? Alright, and that's okay, if there's no questions, uh of course, we can bring questions up later if you do think of one. But uh we'll move on to Paul and the technology update.
Good evening, so I have just one um item to discuss, and that is the um cell survey. Um that was done in June, in uh, in June, once school got out, um our S R F came in. Um to do a site survey of the building, they did a walkthrough and covered all areas, um including the roof. Um they had um the report for us, which you have in your drive. That, again, for us, probably was no surprise, um but it did kind of quantify what we knew anecdotally was true. That the cell signal in the building is poor or non-existent. Um one thing that we probably weren't sure of, that this um report told us was that the signal on the roof. Um which is where typically they would try to grab a signal in in terms of trying to amplify it, if that's all they had to do. Was also very poor, it was not um something that that they could reliably say, you know, they could use to say, hey, we're gonna improve. The cell service in your building by grabbing that signal. Um that said, they made their recommendations of how to um handle um getting us. Uh solid coverage in the building, and that is through small cell hardware. Um what that means is, it's basically something sold directly by Verizon and A T and T. Um to basically almost make our building like a small cell site. Um it it's used through the internet, a combination of the internet and. Um and then internal hardware in the building to kind of um spread that signal around. Currently, that's only available for Verizon and A T and T, so that would only, this would only be a solution that solves those two. Carrier issues, currently T-Mobile does not, um there are other like third party that use. Both Verizon and A T and T's signals, and so those put, would also be improved by that. Um but o- only those two carriers, um again, and this also only car- covers um internally the building. I think um that's all I had, I did, Mike did forward a couple of questions, um so I'll kind of maybe. Uh be preemptive about those couple of things, um someone asked about the Verizon five G project that's going on. That Verizon is is adding um five G repeaters to the poles out along Route seventy. Um while that certainly most likely will improve, especially the cell service outside the building. Um there's no guarantee that it would um improve the cell service inside the building significantly enough. Um we won't know that until they actually start putting those up and um they haven't started doing that yet. Um another question was, will the uh fiber optic um project that we have, that we got the grant for with that? Um play into this, and it it's two different technologies, fiber optic grant is gonna improve our internal network. Our ability to communicate between buildings, but it would not help with the uh the cell service problem. Um and one other question was the um. Safety issue around the equipment that they're gonna install, and um we did ask the engineers and their um. Their explanation, you know, because we kind of expected that question might be, might arise, is the. Holding on to a cellphone um yourself and putting it up to your ear is, is probably about twenty times worse. Than anything that's gonna come from this equipment, so. Um in in terms of of safety and a- adding in these antennas internally, for one, they're gonna mostly be in the hallways, they aren't gonna be in the classrooms. Um but o- overall, what the kind of RF signal that they're putting off is is. Far less than what someone would get from a a cellphone and and holding the cellphone next to you. Anybody have any other questions?
Thanks, Paul, before we uh get into the detailed, the detailed questions, I think, since there is a cost to this. Uh Julian, Megan, the budget subcommittee might want to take a look at this uh your next meeting. Also, I know some people are concerned about the safety issue, so I think Jess, uh I don't see you on my screen, but I know you're on. Uh Jess, I I think is going to take over the Student Success and Technology Committee uh with Lisa, if you guys might want to look at that aspect of this. Plan, maybe at your next meeting and um, you know, see what you, see what you come up with there, if there's anything further that we might want to look into. Um so with that, if anybody does have a question for Paul.
Um yeah, I do, so just I noticed that the cost, like the quote of, doesn't include the finishing work for. The holes that are being drilled within the building. So in terms of the cost and budgeting, that's going to have to be a separate cost too, that I noticed. Um, and yeah, there's several communities that have lawsuits against different cellular powers. So that is definitely some.
Yeah. So if we want to assign that part of it to the technology and success committee, that might be a good thing to look at. Anybody, any other questions?
Can I make a suggestion? Um, I've been learning a lot about this, still learning though. I have a lot to learn. But, um, uh, I've been definitely listening to some, um, talks by the Massachusetts. For Safe Technology Organization and specifically, um, C.C. Doucette, who's the founder. And she's got a fabulous website, by the way. It's M A, the number four, safetech.org. And there's tons of resources on there. There's like over ten thousand studies showing the dangers of all of these signals and, um. You know, some of the issues that people are having within, I'm actually really concerned about it. It actually opens up our blood brain barrier, you know, interrupts our, um, neuro, neural communications by disrupting the calcium ion channels. And so anyway, um, I was wondering if we could invite C.C. Doucette to come and speak at, um, one of our meetings. Or, you know, have an event where we can learn from her. Um, so she can, um, educate us on this before we, you know, move forward with this and just ensure that. We're not adding, you know, a dangerous environment for the students that would potentially even inhibit learning.
Yeah, Lisa, why don't we bring that up at the, at that subcommittee meeting and get more information on what that would involve?
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Paul.
Sorry.
Trying to say something else there?
No, I was just gonna say, you're welcome. And if anybody wants to, you know, forward any of that on, onto me, you know, I'm always. Interested in, in finding any of those, tho- those resources, so.
Is there a deadline? Is there a deadline for this proposal?
Uh, um, the, the quote, um, says it's good for thirty days. So obviously, um. Things are going to change. Um, Carol did ask, um, and, and they, they basically said, you know. There's always inflationary issues, but they didn't see, you know, costs rising significantly, um. On the quote, so like the actual quote at this point is probably getting close to being out of date, um, anyway. But, um, they didn't think that there would be significant changes.
Anybody else?
Um, should I send everybody the, um, the resources that I have, like the, the websites and all of that? So you can kind of pull through it on your own?
Yeah, you, you can send it to me. We can put it in the drive.
Okay, great.
All right, thanks, everybody. Thanks, Paul. Uh, Nancy, how, how's things going with you?
Hi, um, I think we'll start with Dan. Dan, you're still here, right?
Yes.
So we already covered the fire suppression pump. In regards to the HVAC at B E S. Um, I'll let Dan speak to this. This is one of the projects that we were hoping to complete over the summer. But we ran into, um, some difficulties. So I'm go- I'm gonna let Dan, uh, talk about that.
Okay, hi, everybody. So we put the bid out, M L Smith, engineer, uh, and electrical. Won the bid to install the mini splits in the classrooms, um, when he went to go pull the permit, um. The town said they cannot put any of the, uh, the condensers up on the roof. Uh, they would need a structural engineer. So we both came up with a game plan, putting them outside, inside of the building. In any areas that would be effective, uh, with the kids will be fenced in. And with that being said, he said, he brought up to the town, this is what we're going to do, pull the permit. Then the town came back and said, no, we need a engineer design for it. Uh, so for me, it's the first time I've ever heard of a engineer design for a simple install for mini splits. So I reached out to Habib Architect, who did our facility assessment at Berlin and at Boylston. And they are working with M L Smith, uh, to get this done for us.
Any estimate on timeline?
No, I did reach out, uh, yesterday to Mark, uh, from M L Smith, but he wasn't available. I'm hoping to hear back from him tomorrow.
Anybody have any, uh, questions or comments on that one?
Yeah, that's the cost associated with that.
It, it, so the cost of it raised twenty thousand dollars. So what we would do is we would do a change order to add Habib Architect's engineer design to the bid.
And it's still covered within the capital item in the budget.
Yes, it is. Yes.
Yeah.
Twenty thousand dollars for a set of plans to place condensers in a parking lot and fence them in?
Yep.
And that's, the twenty thousand is going to the people that just did the facility study for us?
It's going to go to the, uh, it's basically going to go to M L Smith. The, and, uh, the electrical company that won the bid, but they have to pay Habib Architect for it, yes.
They, they're not going to get the whole thing. It's like a.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, it seems like highway robbery. Um, the only question, and I think we can maybe push this to the subcommittee too, is. And, um, I'm hoping, you know, Si- maybe Cindy will be looped in just the placement of these, because I just know, um. I trust you guys, but just wondering, we don't want it obviously in the back or in the playground. Or I know they have some garden beds that they were thinking about maybe reusing. Um, there's just like such little space on that building where, you know, depending on how many, um, condensers they need to put out. I didn't even think about the whole roof situation and we can't put them on the roof. So, um, I guess just wondering where those are going to be, um, and just to make sure with. The school or Cindy, um, that it's not going to interrupt or disrupt any, um. Learning or any, any, um, any of the areas where, uh, the kids use or softball uses. Or, you know, because there's just multiple uses of that outside space.
Yeah.
There's fair amount of noise on those too, so that should be considered.
Right.
Dan, I'd be interested to know if moving forward, um, I'm wondering why this sort of all happened at the eleventh. Kind of hour, not on your end or, uh, at all. Um, but is there anything we can do proactively when we have these projects with the town so that this doesn't come up?
I would say we would just speak with the town first before starting a project.
Okay.
Input and see what they will need for basically design or a permit or whatever they would require before we do any projects.
Okay.
Any contractor I've ever hired i- is familiar with the town and what they would be required for that job. It sounds like they weren't familiar with that.
I mean, I reached out to other companies and, and they, they all told me the same thing. It's the first time they've ever heard an engineer design for it, so.
Yeah, seems a little high, but I'm not familiar with the code, so.
Interesting. Okay, thanks, Dan.
Cool.
Onto the B E S facility.
All right. So in your packets, you, everyone will see that the, uh, facility assessment came back for Boylston Elementary School. Um, I'll go over some of the highlights. There's a lot of expensive highlights in it.
Where do you go forward? This is something again that the subcommittee, the budget subcommittee will get into in, in detail.
Yeah. So we knew the roof was coming. We, we talked about that last year. We tabled it until we had this assessment done. So the roof came back, just the roof itself, not including the metal portion that's on the library. It came back at five point four six million. The metal portion of the roof came in, uh, at approximately four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Um, that, that's our highest ticketed item. And then. With the way they, Habib and Associates breaks out the assessment, they break it out into priorities. So they have priority one, priority two, and so forth. So the priority one are the things that need to be fixed. Um, soon, and that came out to seven million dollars for priority one. Priority twos are five point four million. Um, but like Mike said, we'll dig into it more at our subcommittee meeting and, um, it's all there for everyone to read through.
Yeah. The other thing I want to say, Nancy, uh, I just want to put this idea out on the table. It doesn't mean I'm advocating for this idea or, or not. Today it stands at eleven million. By the time we get around to doing these projects, who knows what that will grow to. With the growth in the town and the things we've gone over the last couple of years. I think the conversation at least needs to go out to the taxpayers and to the parents and the voters about a possible new building. I mean, sinking twelve million dollars into repairs that will last for several years versus. Do we start talking about a new building? And if we do start talking about a new building in a single district, do we start talking about a single building for both towns, one district? That would take a lot, uh, it wouldn't happen overnight. It would require changes to the regional agreement. Which requires D C to get involved and new school buildings require the state to get involved anyway. Um, but I think if we're going to have this conversation about a five million dollar roof. We at least need to put this idea out to the public that, do you want to support twelve million and duct tape repairs? Or do you want to consider what it's going to take to do something bigger and better for the town with all the growth that's coming in? With all these stories about, you know, uh, additional people moving in next door. Will they end up in Boylston? Will they end up in Berlin? Who knows? I don't know, but there's a lot of growth coming and, and you know, it's probably a ten year project anyway. And when do you start talking about that, you know, after it's already needed? So I, I think I just want to take this opportunity to put it out there. If anyone's listening, if you're a taxpayer in town, i- is this something you would be interested in? Or do you want to find the money elsewhere just to make the repairs and, and go along for however many more years we can do? I don't know, but I think that conversation needs to start.
One of the other things I wanted to mention too, I did share the assessment. And actually, the cellphone site survey, I'd sent it out to the towns so they, they could see it. So they're fully aware of all the repairs. And Mike, with you saying that, just what pops in my brain is, you know, for move forward with the H V A C. If we were going to go down that avenue, do we still want to continue with the H V A C? I don't know.
That's a serious question. Um, you know, I guess it would depend. Uh, this is a long conversation to be had over.
Right.
Months, but you know, what's the building going to be used for later? Is it worth it?
Right, right.
But yeah, I, I think maybe, I don't know, maybe we get together with the towns and maybe we have some sort of community night or something where people can speak up. One way or another, I don't know. Something to think about, you know, as we start having these conversations.
Right.
Any, all right, does anybody else have any questions for Nancy about this?
Yeah, I mean, looking, looking at the whole assessment, I, I'm glad it's going to be looked at as a subcommittee, because it's like some of the things. You know, like replacing the fluorescent with LED fixtures, one point one million, you know, it, I, if it's. It ain't, uh, sick and it's like, so I, I'm glad there is a priority list to those items, but some of the, the estimates are just. You know, new phone system for forty-eight thousand dollars, it just seems unnecessary for some of the items. So, uh, in as, the whole thing looks like a huge ticket price, but if you look down at, some of them don't seem necessary.
Yeah, I agree with Jess.
Yeah, a lot of their priorities might not align with our priorities. So it's definitely has to, uh.
One thing that stuck out to me is all the mentions of water damage, which when you hear water damage needs to mold. Is there mold in the classrooms and under the carpets and the library and the books that people haven't checked out in a while? Because those are where the water issues are happening. There are more water issues. I didn't realize, you know, the mentions the floor by the boys bathroom. Uh, in the hallway, uh, so the mold issues. And then the other thing I was not aware of is. From an equity standpoint, there are so many things in there that are not ADA compliant. And I, I didn't think we could have that situation in a school building that wouldn't be ADA compliant. So, um, there's a lot of things in there beyond just the six million dollars for a roof that are a little bit surprising.
Yeah, the only thing I would just like to add is, um, especially being a parent who's about to send my two children back to that building. You know, we, we, you know, thinking about the breadth of this project, is it? Is it suitable and is it safe for these children within the next year or two years or three years that are going to have to go to it, you know? Because taking on building a new school or doing some of these repairs, I, I get that, uh, it's a huge ticket price, but. You know, we want to make sure that this building is safe for these kids. Um, I think that's first and foremost on all of our agendas, so.
Staff, Megan, I mean, they, this is a workplace, you know, like.
Great.
Workplace and there's. Water leaks and.
Yeah, so I think, you know, um, some of this stuff that, you know, like you, you said, you used the word soon, Nancy. Like, what does that mean? Does that mean that we need to spend the seven million this year on this roof? Like, does this roof has no more life on it? Or does that mean within the next five years? That, that's a relative term. So, um, I, I think we definitely need to dig into it in the subcommittee meeting, but, um. I just, that's how I'm kind of looking at this is. We got to make sure that, you know, it has to be okay for all these people that are going to this building every single day, starting, you know, now.
Yeah.
So Megan, too, I know that you wanted, we were going to plan to try to meet the fifth or sixth of September. Is there anything that you want us to look into? I know Mike mentioned the mold issues prior to that meeting. That we can also bring to the table for, as we start to kind of di- dissect all of this information. Because I hear what you're saying. I mean, structurally, can the students go in as long as a fire chief? Um, you know, is given approval, kind of like we, I mean, obviously we do that every year, but. What else about it? Is the, does a roof need to be repaired yesterday? I don't, that's something we have to discuss, um, when, when is that going to get done? So, um, I don't know, Nancy, I don't know if, like, we don't have a timeline right on that roof yet, or do we? I don't think, no.
Not yet.
Begin to make some, we should make some decisions about that.
Right, and I think the big thing we need to figure out, um, is what responsibility lies with the town of Boylston? Because it is their building and what responsibility lies with the school department, meaning, you know. This building inspector who works for the town of Boylston, what responsibility does, does whatever department have that maintains the buildings that the town owns? And again, I'm learning too, um, versus what is Dan going to be responsible for? Um, you know, getting quotes for and, and running some of these projects. We have to kind of figure all of that out. So that might be a good starting point. Um, and you know, it would have been nice, like. If we got a little bit more detail, and I don't know, Dan, you know, if you have a relationship with the person that wrote that, that study, if you could. You know, if somebody could get clarity on what is, in, in somebody's professional opinion. When do we need to have this roof done by? You know, because that's a huge ticket item, going back to these towns, the cost.
And if it's like. Going to say, oh, you can hold off for a year. They, they did list it as a critical priority level one. I mean, they stopped short of saying it's going to collapse tomorrow. But I think the report's pretty clear that you better take care of this sooner or later, or you might be on the news.
Yeah, I mean, a year, like that's, that's, we got to get on this now. So, yeah, I, I think. If Carol, if we could just get kind of clarity on, on that and, um, and maybe. Maybe we invite someone from Boylston, because I feel like, have they responded to this? Has anyone from the town responded to this?
Think, I saw one response.
That was Berlin.
That was Berlin. I mean. Do they have seven million dollars to fix a roof this year? That is a question. Do we have seven million dollars?
I can probably.
The, uh, just to let you know really quick what, so. Next week, uh, and Dan can speak to this too, we do have someone coming in for a mold test. At B E S, just so everyone's aware, for the library and different areas of the, the building bathrooms.
Actually, I come in tomorrow morning.
Oh, even better.
Good.
Yeah.
Megan, to your, uh, to your, to your response also, I, I would just say to you that. We, we did only receive the finalized version. You had gotten the, the draft. We were waiting for the finalized version a short time ago. And we, we did want to put this out there kind of purely to get, to hear your feedback, to get your direction. And, and where you wanted to go and how fast you wanted to move on this and, and what you wanted to do, what were your biggest concerns? So we really are at kind of ground zero in terms of, well, in terms of. Guiding us into your direction of what you're thinking. So that's what I wanted to say. We have to. So this is good input from you, and I think that we'll find, I mean, we'll get this information, we'll meet as a subcommittee. And then we'll know what else we need to find out before we, bef- before we move forward the next step.
You know. Was there a grant as well? Sorry. Was there a grant? I, I feel like in the spring, there was a grant that was seen for roofs specifically.
There was a, there is a grant I sent that, that was sent to me by, hmm, one of the select board members and. And I think that I had sent that along to Nancy and to Dan to take a look at. Again, we can look at that grant, absolutely. We just didn't wanna go in a direction without getting your guidance on what direction to go in and how.
Yeah, would it be possible before school starts to share this report with the the Boylston Fire Chief? And building inspector and get their sign off that this building is safe to open for children?
Yeah, absolutely.
See if the town will wanna take a walk to the school and, uh.
Yeah, I mean, there there are a lot of, there are a lot of, lot of parts in this report that say structurally unsound, so.
Yeah.
Mike, can I ask a question? Um, in regards to the roof and the safety, you know, we've had a lot of rain, it's very heavy. Got a lot come down all at once and we're gonna, you know, rumor rumor has it that it's supposed to be, uh, you know, a snowy winter. Do we know, was this company able to tell us if the roof can sustain? Especially over the gym, um, the. The load, like the the extra weight on top. Or I guess, I guess I was asking Nancy or or Dan that. Um, I'm just thinking ahead to like the winter months, I know.
I I don't know the answer to that, but that's something definitely we we can.
They, they used to shovel the roof, Laurie, do you remember, like Ace would be up there himself shoveling that roof, I mean. So I don't know.
Dan, you climbed a roof last year, didn't you?
If I did, then I fell.
But you were fine, Dan, after, I was okay though.
But now we have, now Cindy, we have Cindy too.
She gonna be up there shoveling.
Won't be the first time I've shoveled around a building.
Carol, if we could get their input before school starts, I think that might set a lot of people at ease, um. Yeah, for the town, but uh, if anybody has any other questions on that, I think the. Subcommittees will dive into that in detail.
Okay.
Dan, will you send that mold test? When you you said tomorrow, I'm just curious.
It's usually a one day turnaround.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, before we get into the business items, Carol, I think we forgot to introduce Nicole, or has Nicole been introduced to everybody?
Yeah, of course, thank you. I had the admin team and she is my admin team. I want to introduce Nicole Bellata, who is my new administrative assistant. Um, she has been in for since July and we are so grateful, grateful, grateful to have her in place. Um, she's been baptism by fire. She's been learning so many things as she's doing it and, um, she's on tonight. Taking her first minute, so welcome to Nicole as well.
Thank you. And Nancy, I think I may have cut you off on your last one, or do you wanna do that when we go through votes?
I'll do it now. To, so I'd like to introduce Michael Anarado. He is our new director of food service. Services, he comes to. To us with extensive experience and a background in food services. And he's been a food service director, I think for the last five years at a different regional school. So I like to welcome him and I'm very, really excited for what he's gonna bring to our district. He's already working. On some incredible, exciting things for us, so welcome, Michael.
Thank you, Nancy. How's everyone doing tonight? Oh, there we are.
There he is.
So Michael's gonna talk in a little bit about the the. Food prices, we'll cover that shortly.
Alright.
But I have a couple more things if that's. Good.
Go ahead, by all means.
Okay. Um, one of the, so a couple of things I wanted to cover, one is the bus routes for the new school year. We're hopeful that they will be in my hands tomorrow. But then they're gonna go, we spoke to the, um, highway department today, highway departments today. And then they're gonna review it before we release it to the parents. Um, they like to look at it for any new routes that were added. They wanna make sure that the, any new streets or anything that the buses will be going down are safe. Can be plowable, um, and make sense with the routes that they have. So I'm hopeful to release it to the parents by Monday. The latest, that is our goal. With the bus routes, so stay tuned for that. Um. And, and. At this point in time, we have a driver for every bus route. I kinda don't wanna say that out loud.
Yeah, sure.
One of the things, um, I also wanted to quickly cover, I'm sure many of you heard that the governor released a supplemental budget. And we were kinda hopeful that we were gonna get additional funds from chapter seventy. Unfortunately, because Berlin-Boylston is below minimum aid, that didn't happen for us. So we did not receive any additional funds. I just wanted to make sure the committee was aware of that. Um, one thing I was gonna talk tonight about was the nurses stipend. But at this point in time, I'm gonna push that to the next meeting. Um, we're still gathering some additional information before we present that to you.
Okay, so that was number eight on the business item, so we're gonna scratch that?
We're gonna scratch that, yeah. And the one other thing I wanted, I'm looking for approval from the committee. We're requesting a new additional point seven five FTE person in the business office. So the job description for this position is in your drive. So it would be a business office assistant. It would be reporting to the director of finance in the duties range from human resources to accounts payable to accounts receivable. Um, as you, I think as everyone knows, we've had a lot of turnover in the business office this past year. With this turnover. A lot has come to our attention. The workload assigned to the business office employees. Is just way too much for the number of employees we have in the office. So we have three currently. People in the office, one that handles all HR, payroll, benefits, terminations. New hires, and then we have accounts payable, accounts receivable, she handles grants. She oversees student activities, she reconciles all the accounts. Um, she just so much, both of them do so much and they're very overworked, so, um. Within. Sorry. So we wanna make sure that we are taking our time and we're serving our employees. Right, we wanna serve them correctly with doing payroll, with HR, with benefits. And reimbursements and doing the budget right. So we really, we're asking for this additional position. So we can get staff properly. Um, it'll be a split split position within the district. The save, we're projecting a savings and transportation, which gives us enough to fulfill this position. Um, so this job is for thirty hours and it's ranging from about twenty nine dollars an hour to thirty one dollars an hour. Just to give you an example of the workload that has hit our office this year. To date, we have thirty five new hires. We have eight new substitutes that have come in. And then we have twelve terminations. With all of those comes contracts, paperwork, onboarding, signing up for benefits, meeting with them all. Um, it's just in increasing as as time goes on. Can I answer any questions?
Nancy, did you say, I have one Nancy, you said there's three currently in the office with, in the business office, you're the third and this person will be the fourth, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Alright, that, uh, that's number seven on the business item, so we'll get to that. Anything else, Nancy?
That, well, that's it.
Okay, the final last call, any questions? Alright, so under business items, we'll ask for a motion for each item. Once we have a motion seconded. Then we can discuss. So moving on to business items, one. Is that a question from someone? No, just some background noise, okay? Uh, could I have a motion, please, to approve the overnight field trip for the high school band, jazz band and chorus to go to Hershey, Pennsylvania, Gettysburg, Pennsylvania? Uh, April twenty fifth through the twenty eighth next year, or in twenty twenty four, this school year. Uh, the field trip application is in the drive. Uh, could I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Uh, that sounds like Jess in a second.
A second.
Alright, Lori, seconded. Anyone have any questions on this? Carol, is there anyone here to present on this?
Yes, Jeremiah Galant is on this evening to speak to this.
Excellent, Jeremiah.
Good evening and thank you for, uh. This opportunity, uh, this is a repeat trip from a trip that we did nine years ago now. Uh, nine years ago, we took the high school chorus to Hershey, well, to Gettysburg and Hershey, Pennsylvania. To participate in a music in the parks festival. If you're not familiar with music in the parks festival, it's a performing festival where you take performing groups and they perform in front of adjudicators. Uh, who grade the performance and then do a workshop with our students, uh. And then afterwards, those students get to go to usually a theme park that they have coordinated with. Uh, and then there's an award ceremony at the theme park. Uh, we cram packed our, the trip nine years ago, which I have car, basically carbon copied and repeated for this upcoming year. Uh, to include, uh. Going to Hershey, Pennsylvania, uh, where the students learn about the Hershey company, uh, and also the legacy of Milton Hershey. Which includes, uh, a trolley bus tour around the town, which technically is actually part of a. A different town, it's not an actual town in the United States, something that we learned on the trip. Uh, and also the legacy that he did and the, the school that he has built up there. Uh, then we also go to Gettysburg, uh, go to the museum, learn about the rotunda, uh, the. The painting that they have there as well as, uh, a guided tour through the. The battlefield, which personally, uh, brought the whole historical. Uh, narrative to a whole different dimension, to be able to to stand on these certain points, uh, and to see the historical narrative. Where where things occurred. Uh, it's a great camaraderie camaraderie buildup, it's a, it's a memory that students take away. Uh, I definitely know my students who went nine years ago, uh, when they graduated, we're still talking about it. Uh, and then we, it's something, uh, that I did when I was in high school and, uh, something I would, I know Jeff and I. Hope to. Somehow maintain as, as a. A, the tradition in in the, in the future, uh, it is, it was impacted by, uh. A variety of things over the past few years, as we all know, uh, including, we tried to go last year, I tried to set it up, but the bus. Uh, the tour company could not find a bus, and so we. The reason why I presented is that the tour company has found buses for us and have them reserved, so. Uh, the, we're very excited about it. Uh, the timeline that we have is. First month back in September, we're gonna have an orientation meeting with our, uh, representative for, from the tour company. Uh, and then, uh, that will also allow them to put a deposit down. And then there's gonna be a payment plan through the year, which we hope to supplement with fundraising. Uh, or the, the goal is to, to supplement it with some, some fundraising through the year.
Jeremiah, I just wanna quickly jump in, um, on what you're saying. One of the things I love about this trip is it. It emphasizes that we are supporting, um, and promoting the arts, performance arts for our children. Um, I think it's a wonderful opportunity to, to give them a vote of support as as they go forward and perform. In another location, which I love, um, about this trip. Um, the other thing I would mention there, this is, uh, this does involve two days that are out of school. And I know Lisa is gonna, would just briefly mention how she looks at this trip for those individuals. So Lisa, could you just jump on a second and just share what you and I had talked about, um, as far as being out of school during those two days?
Sure, uh, whenever, um, there are school trips that take place during the school day, we wanna look at student attendance. And we wanna look at their achievement in, um, in their coursework, so. Students who were, had excessive absences or, um, you know, had any failures in any courses. We would have to, um, you know, look at their attendance on the trip.
Thank you, thanks Lisa. Jeremiah, thanks for jumping on tonight with us, we appreciate it. We wanted to make sure if this goes through that you have enough time to get everything in place that you've needed to. So that's why we're having it early.
Um, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, is there any discussion from the committee? Alright, all in favor of this field trip?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, we need to, I think we need to take a roll call here, so Lori.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
Jess.
Aye.
Megan.
Aye.
And Lisa.
Aye.
Alright, so that is approved, um. Alright, we need, uh, we should have technically done a roll call, I think, for the consent agenda as well, so, uh, could I have a motion to re-approve the consent agenda as is?
So moved.
Heard Jess, and I heard Julie seconded that, so Lori.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
Jess.
Aye.
Megan.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
I'm an I as well, yeah, uh, because we're on Zoom, I believe this is the reason we have to do this way, so sorry about that, that was my mistake earlier. Alright, moving on to number two, uh, could I have a motion to approve the overnight field trip to Cape, uh, Cape Cod? The nature of being, uh, for October twenty first through the twenty third.
So moved.
Julie. Lori seconded, uh, Carol, is anyone here to discuss this?
Yes, Peter Doherty and Steve Pacheco are both, I believe, on tonight to discuss this.
Hi, uh, Peter Doherty here, um. Yeah, it's our annual trip, we, uh, we went last year just in the spring, but, uh, we've moved it back to the fall this year. We find that the fall is a better, uh, time to do the trip, uh, which is what we've historically done. Um, weather wise, as, and also because of the schedule in the spring is hectic, um, so that's why we're, we're doing this trip again. I'm sure most of you are familiar with our trip, I don't know if you need me to go on and on about that, but, uh, we're looking for approval for this again.
Is this the trip where John sang the praises of the Artemost House book?
Yes.
Alright, yeah, I read that book from that, alright, good. Uh, any questions, any discussion from anyone?
I have a general question just about, um, kids that can't or need help support funding it. Is there, Lisa, is there, is there a fund bank at the school for these kids for any of the field trips? How does that work?
Um. Well, we you, um. There, there's a principal fund that, um, I would, um, tap into for that, um. You know, we usually, I I would look at that.
Okay, can I, can I speak to that a little bit? Yes. So one of the things we do do is, you know, we look at our, we have a small population, but we have a small population of free and reduced. So we would, those students. The school would work together with the advisors to try to do fundraising, uh, to help, to help the students in need. And then they would reach out and also ask beyond that of any students that need, need help. And then we'll do fundraising, raising initiatives. It won't come from the general budget, it has to come from the student activities. Um, but we'll all work inside to make that work. So if there's financial need, we'll come up with some fundraising.
Gotcha.
Ideas.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Mike, can I just say one thing? Uh, my daughter was a senior last year and she went on this trip, so I asked her today about it and. It's interesting that I had read about, I knew about it, but I read about it, and one of the things that, uh, that, um. Steve and and Peter both do is they want the kids and Lisa as well, they want the kids to be outside as much as possible. And I didn't tell her what I read, and she said that one of the neatest things was that the weather wasn't that good, but they worked around it and they were outside most of the time, which. These kids are never outside anymore, um, and I asked her, did you think it was worthwhile? And she said it was one of her best memories from Tohoto. So I thought that was worth mentioning.
Cool. Anyone else? Alright, so, uh, the motion's on the table, so Lori.
Aye.
Favorite, uh, Julie.
Aye.
Jess.
Aye.
Megan.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
I'm an I as well, great, that is approved, thank you. Next up is, uh, to accept a couple of donations, so we have, uh, could I first have a motion to accept? Uh, the life back donations from the Boylston Lions Club?
So moved.
Lisa.
Second.
I heard Jess first, um, alright, any questions or, um, we have something in the drive, uh, would you like me to read it, Carol, or?
I I think you said, to summarize, this was a donation made by the Boylston Lions Club, um, it was two of these life back. Pieces of equipment, um, they were donating to Tohoto, two to Tohoto and two to Boylston. This was a piece of equipment that came. Um, the idea came from a member on the, on the Boylston Lions Club, um, based on something that was in that individual school. And they thought it was beneficial, I gave them to, uh, Jill Flanagan, the fire chief, he's gonna do training on the use of those. Along with Michael Anorato from food service, we have also ordered two for Berlin Memorial School, so they'll have them as well. Dan, Dan was gonna be taking care of that, and we'll do training for that too with foods, food service staff, and then really. Dan Dan was gonna be taking care of that and we'll do training for that too with foods food service staff and then really any administrators that are around. Um in in the in the cafeteria during that time.
Excellent. Any uh questions or comments on that? Alright, so uh all in favor, let's see uh my order shifted here on the screen. So we'll start with Megan.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Jess.
Aye.
Lori.
Aye.
And Julie.
Aye.
Um yeah, and I'm an I as well. Okay, great. Thank you very much to the Boylston Lions Club. That motion uh is approved. May have a motion to accept sixty laptops from Crest Technologies.
So moved.
Jess. Any second there?
Second.
Lisa, thank you. Uh Carol, again on this one. There's a documentation in the drive uh on this as well, but Carol.
Yeah, this was a very swift um decision this summer. This came to us rather unexpectedly um through a text. About did we want these sixty laptops? They had never been used. They were about a year and a half old, but they were not out of the box. Um and they they were given to us by Crest Technology that had gotten them from Wentworth Institute for Technology. So Paul and I were both on the conversation and we scooped them up, always thinking that we will have a use for them, which we which we do. We we can use these and disperse them to staff who are in need of a a new laptop across the district. So that's what we're planning to do with those.
They split equally between the buildings or how how they being split up?
By need. I think it's need and one building, I think Berlin needs them more. Other Berlin teachers, we discussed that, but um certainly. But.
I'll 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 just I'll just add Mike that because they're one offs, like because they're not Dells like the rest, like we're trying to keep. From just spreading them all over the place, so they're predominantly gonna be in in the elementary schools um at least to start. And and we're gonna try to keep them there if we can, but if again, if we end up with a need at Tohoto, then we will certainly look at that, but. Um because they're different from what we have, um and we're we're trying to, you know, keep it so that, you know, if something breaks down, it's it's not. One thing in one building or one teacher has X and another teacher has Y, we're we're trying to, you know, work that and make that as 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 best as possible.
Okay, any questions, comments, discussion? Alright, so approve this motion. Now Lisa.
Aye.
Megan.
Aye.
Jess.
Aye.
Lori.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Thank you. This motion passes to accept them. Thank you to Crest Technologies. Uh next to number four, we have a motion to shift or accept the school choice openings to grade eight for three additional slots. This is requested by Lisa. Uh the motion first.
So moved.
Lori, second.
Second.
Okay, Julie, Lisa, do you want to uh discuss this? I know the committee might have a question or two on this one.
Um so I'm a actually not asking for any, uh it was that me, me, Lisa?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, yes, sorry.
Checking, just checking. Um so I'm not asking for any additional um slots. I'm just asking to um shift those slots. When I have been looking at the numbers. Um for enrollment, I noticed that there's a sharp difference between eighth grade and ninth grade. Um we lose quite a few students um going from eighth to ninth grade and. There and that's reason because people um go to private school. Um there's sports involved. There's lots of different reasons um why this happens. We lose uh students to ASABET. So if we have a really solid base for school choice at in grade eight. Those students matriculate to grade nine and they're really in there for the long haul. Um they're in there because they want to be at Tonto um for the duration and they've really chosen Tonto, whereas. You know, we have had open spots for different grade levels and it especially at the high school level. Um you know, if we get a school choice person, you know, from tenth grade or eleventh grade, um there's probably a different mindset. So I was hoping just to kind of shift the numbers. I'm not, we're not adding any additional seats, just shifting. Um to eighth grade so that um and still kind of keeping the um the cap at ninety students per grade level.
So I'm I'm looking at the graph or the sheet that you gave to us. Um. Current enrollment on on the bottom half there. So where are you showing? You want to shift from what to what?
Oh, she's muted.
Oh.
I think there were like thirty, thirty available seats. And so I just um. Where there, I think there were more seats available in the upper grades. I just had one, I just wanted to. Say, okay, you know, can we use, because we have um. You know, in the eighth grade, I wanted to.
So I I guess the question is, what are we voting to do to? So we are, we approved thirty slots last year.
Okay.
It looks like maybe is there fourteen still open? Is that what this is showing?
Yes, there there is still that. I just I I wanted to make sure that I wasn't overstepping. And I knew that there were available seats and the school committee, it appeared as though there was a vote on. At for different grade levels. So I just.
That's what it was, yeah.
Um so I just had wanted um because every the numbers shift. Depending on who, there's actually students move out of school, uh out of district and in district. So there is shifting that happens. And I noticed that the eighth grade numbers started to recede. And I was like, really, I would like to uh you know, open up a few spots for eighth grade. Um. There are other open seats. So I just wanted to get that approval. You know, with the proper channels.
Like in in the spring, I'm looking at the top half of your sheet, eighth grade, I think. The total that we we approved or voted for was eighty-five total enrolled.
Hmm.
And then the bottom half, it's showing eighth grade current enrollment is actually above that. It's at eighty-eight. Kids moved in the town, that's fine.
Right.
It's it's already above the level there. Uh and if some of these classes are under the level that we uh approved on, so. We're not this, I I want to be clear, what is this vote? Because the way it was read, the motion on the table currently is to shift or accept. School choice openings for grade eight for three additional slots. So if we shift to grade eight. What are we shifting out of? Because we're not creating new.
Great, grade ten. We would shift out of grade ten. So so right.
Okay.
So.
Are there current applicants?
And.
Sorry, are there current applicants?
Yeah, that's that's why there there's a specific number, because we did have, there are um school choice. There are three applicants for school choice, so I had want, you know, I was. Um I that's why the number is so specific, because when I was looking at the numbers. And you know, looking at the, you know, the differential that happens between middle school and ninth grade. Said, you know, this this seemed to be logical.
Lisa, can I just ask a question? So it says the current total enrollment is eighty-eight. So with those three new kids, would it be ninety-one?
No, so that's it would not be because that um that was a few days ago. You know, and it and it shift. So. When in power school, there are a lot of different students that are um populated into power school. So we pull numbers out of power school and sometime sometimes those um those include out of district placements. So with the three um with the three total, with the three additional students, um we would have eighty-eight students.
Thank you. So that would be.
Excuse me?
There's currently eighty-five and you want eighty-eight. Is that what?
Correct, correct.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I think I. Oops, sorry. Zoom. No, I think it makes perfect sense, Lisa. I totally got it. Um what I I didn't understand about the chart was, and correct me if I'm wrong here. Um but I know what you're seeking approval for and I I I like that. But in the current ninth grade, there's seventy-four students and ten. Kids were were recommended for school choice. Nobody came in.
Well, I there there might, there might, there might be like one um.
Okay.
Have to go back. There might be one um in school choice for ninth grade. And so that's. That was my whole reasoning when I, because I kept, that was really honestly, I I've been working um with Karen in the admins in the building. And I'm like, okay, what are our numbers? What are our numbers? Just trying to kind of track, see what's happening. And.
Alright, so I think we have it then. So.
Okay, okay.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, Lisa.
Well, since we're shifting, you wanted to shift the three spots from the tenth grade to the eighth grade. Would it make any sense at all? Like, I don't really know exactly how this works, but would it make any sense at all to just shift them? From the eleventh grade, you know, so then there's four and eleven, three still in ten, and then we have you have the three you need for the eighth grade? Like, does it even matter?
It doesn't really matter. So it can be eleventh.
Alright, we should be specific for the motion to approve the vote, so we're not creating new slots that aren't taken anyway. So. Um can we get an amendment to the motion, please, to uh shift three school, open school choice seats from tenth grade to eighth grade? Would someone mo- uh do that motion, please?
So moved.
This is an amendment. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
I heard uh Megan, okay. So let's vote on the amendment to amend the motion to shift three specific slots from tenth grade to eighth grade. Lisa.
Aye.
I didn't hear you, sorry.
Oh, I?
Yeah, okay, Megan.
Aye.
Lori.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
Jess. Was that an I, Jess? I'm sorry, didn't come through.
I'm freezing, so I.
Okay, sorry. Alright, so alright, so now we're going to specifically shift three from tenth grade to eighth grade. So the motion now is to. Shift. Three open school choice slots from tenth grade to eighth grade. Uh. This is the original motion now that has been amended. Lisa, you approve.
Aye.
Megan.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
Lori.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay. Alright, that's three slots now moved to eighth grade from tenth grade. Excellent. Alright. Uh next up is the uh. Sorry? Was that someone?
I said great.
Can I have a motion to approve the eighth grade elective replacements?
So moved.
Julie, second?
Second.
Second.
Lisa, I heard first, thank you, Jess. Alright, um what's this about? Uh again, this is Lisa.
So we um we did not have a teacher to. Um teach fun with math. And so I reached. And asked if anybody was interested in offering an elective class for eighth graders. And um Alexis Maynard offered um to. Um teach Odyssey um for eighth grade Odyssey.
Alrights. Um but I haven't, we did the motion. Uh is there any discussion?
Similar to like Odyssey of the Mind? Is that kind of its basis?
It is, is, I mean, we, it's not Odyssey of the Mind, because we're not using the exact, but it is around the same idea, yes.
That's awesome. I did that when I was a kid and it was really good to have you think out of the box and create a solution. So that's awesome.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Okay, uh for vote, Lisa.
Aye.
Lori.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
Megan.
Aye.
Jess.
Aye.
Alright, that is approved. Thank you. Uh could I have a motion to approve the increase in additional school lunch prices?
So moved.
Lori, second?
Second.
Megan, okay. Um Nancy or Michael, do you have something here for us?
Uh yes, um so our school lunch prices, especially for adults, uh we have to have a specific uh minimum amount. So we use a what's called the school lunch equity tool to figure out exactly what that price needs to be. So that price this year needs to be four dollars and ninety-six cents. And right now we charge four dollars and fifty cents for an adult lunch. Um within conversation with the food service staff. Um. We've come up with, we'd like to uh increase it to five dollars and twenty-five cents. The reason being is we don't have to have this conversation next August if we raise it enough to cover um whatever increase is for next year. Our uh our adult lunch prices right now are four dollars and fifty cents, so we're not in compliance. We do have to change those. Our adult breakfast prices are two dollars and fifty cents. Um we just need to adjust our prices to um. Uh make sure that we're not only A, staying in compliance, but B, um not uh selling meals for um less than a cost to produce them. It looks like it's been a couple of years at least since these have been updated.
Okay, and as far as students are concerned, their lunch is free. The state has passed that now, so student lunches are free. However, if a student wants additional food beyond that free lunch, there's a cost as well?
Yes, Mike, that's a great question. So what we have in our system now is a second meal costs students one dollar. Um I'd like to say that's okay, but the price of apples are gonna be seventy-five cents an apple this, starting this fall. So we have to raise that from a dollar. My um. My suggestion is a second, uh a second lunch for an elementary student would be two dollars. And a second lunch for a student at Tohoto would be two dollars and twenty-five cents. And the difference in those pricing is the difference in um portion sizes that we actually would be serving to a middle school, high school student. Because K through five gets a certain amount of food and grades six through twelve get that much more.
Okay, uh so any adult food period, this is what it will cost. Uh and students' first lunch is free if they want a second lunch. This is what it would cost now if we approve this. Alright, if you have any questions or discussion? Alright, so to vote, so in favor, Lisa.
Aye.
Megan.
Aye.
Jess jumped around again.
Yeah, sorry about the wifi. I.
Lori.
Aye.
And Julie somewhere on my screen. There she is, Julie.
Aye.
Okay, I'm an I as well. So that is approved as well. Thank you. Uh last one up, I have a motion to approve the business office assistant position.
So moved.
Julie. Lori, second? Um Nancy already discussed or talked about this. Is there any questions or discussion from the committee?
So I know she said that it's covered by transportation savings this year. I guess we just need to think about future years as well, or or is it just a one-year position?
My hope is to keep it in the budget, so it'll be built into the budget for next year.
Alright.
So did we ever replace? So uh prior to this year, we had two administrative assistants. We had Brenda and Christie.
So Brenda, Brenda, in the business office, we had a payroll coordinator in that position was replaced. Bren- Brenda was the executive assistant, the curriculum director. So that's not part of the business office. And that position was not renewed.
Right, so we, what I guess my point is Brenda was a head that we never replaced in central office. So the head.
Correct.
Would still.
Oh, yes.
The same, because we never replaced that head for the assistant. For that. And is there plans to do that? Or because that I that was probably budgeted for, right?
Oh, yeah, that was budgeted. Uh yeah, there's no plans to replace that position at this time.
Okay, so we're essentially saying we had two assistants for the office, whatever, maybe you redistributed the work. I leave that up to you guys, but. We had two assistants for the office and now we we're trying to get back to two. We have one full-time assistant right now. We want to.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Alright, so vote, Lisa.
Aye.
Megan.
Aye.
Lori.
Aye.
Jess.
Aye.
Julie.
Yes, I.
I'm an I as well. That motion passes. Okay, that's all of our business items. And if I could scroll down to the bottom here, so we have a a couple of future agenda item proposals that are on the agenda. Uh we're definitely gonna be talking about the goals and the facility plans. The subcommittees have their assignments. Uh the district improvement plan, that'll be discussed uh in more detail in September. Uh, the district improvement plan, that'll be discussed uh in more detail in September, as well as discussing a school resource officer. Uh, I think Carol's had several conversations with them about that, so we'll, we'll talk about that. Already mentioned possibly having uh some sort of town hall style meeting about uh buildings and school buildings, if we want to start that discussion. And then uh, we are gonna have the nurse leader come in and talk to us in September, and we'll have the school counselors talking to us in October. Uh, the election I already covered. Um, if there's anything I missed for future agenda items, please let me know, uh, send me an email, text, however you wanna, well, no text, but an email. Uh, get in touch with me, but unless anyone has anything else, our next meeting will be September twelfth. Uh, could I? Was that a question or a comment? Jess, I think you were raising your hand.
No, that was me. That was me, Mike, I don't, I, I just wanted to, and it doesn't, it's not a big deal, we're just gonna um shift to the, the presentations for at least the fall. Mike, Mike Honorado is gonna go in September and uh Lisa Lamro asked if she could go in October or November, so. It's not a big deal, but.
Alright, Jess, it looked like you were raising your hand, but then you froze, do you wanna add anything? Okay. Alright.
Sorry.
That's okay, anybody else? Twice, alright, could I have a motion to adjourn this meeting of the Burnley Boylston Regional School Committee?
So moved.
Lori?
Second.
Julie, Lisa?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Yes?
Aye.
Jess is an I, Lori?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm an I as well.